Good evening. Welcome to the four o'clock work session for Lynchburg City Council. And I will, for today, April 28th, and I will turn to City Manager Savercheck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Today, we pick up rebalancing the proposed FY 2021 budget. As you are all very, very well aware, we are experiencing a pandemic which has caused some major hurdles for us to get through as we move forward with you considering the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget. Over the past two weeks, the budget team made up of Chief Financial Officer Donna Witt, Deputy City Manager Reed Wodicka, Budget Analyst Scarlett Early, Accountant Reed Lanham, and Budget Analyst Megan Palmer. Did I get everybody? Have really spent a lot of time, as well as the Commissioner of Revenue, who has been really, really helpful in helping us understand what little information we are getting regarding revenue that is coming in for at least part of the month of March. So today, what we want to do is go through sort of the refresh of proposed FY 2021 general fund budget with you. And I'm going to do the first couple of slides, and then our CFO Donna Witt will walk you through how we came up with our projected revenues and a proposal to, on how to balance the loss of those revenues. So what we, what we do know is, first and foremost, we are most well aware that we have citizens to serve who have expectations and a city to maintain, both direct and indirect services. So direct services are things like fire and police and parks and recreation, and all of those things that are very, very visible to our citizens. Indirect services are things like fleet services, finance, human resources, city attorney, those things that are behind the scenes, helping to make sure that the people in the community, the very visible people are getting, you know, they're getting paid, they're getting, they're getting the equipment that they need, things are getting managed, and things are getting led. So we know that. What we also know is historical trends do not apply. We don't have any history for this. 1917 is not gonna, 1917 or 1918, whenever the last pandemic was, is not going to help us. So typically, we have historical trends that we count on to help us develop future trends. That doesn't help us. Future trends, we will know when we know. They, they will be developing as this new or changed revenue comes in from roughly mid-March until this thing stabilizes. With every passing month, we know a little more. We had a due date on March 20th for our consumption taxes, meals, sales, lodging, and amusement taxes. So for half of that month, we sort of know a little bit about what is happening in our community economically and what is not. Our revenue lags, so we get our March revenue in May. So we have to wait for the economy to adjust and get us the payments in this new world. So before we go on to the next slide, we want to know from you what we know that we haven't considered. Are there any other things that we know that we have not considered as we move into projecting our revenues? We think this revenue projection is going to be a very fluid, very evolving thing. Staff is very committed to bringing to you, at least on a quarterly basis, as we move into fiscal year 2021, what is going on with those revenue receipts. But if there's anything else that you think we should know that we've not listed here, please let us know. And if you can't think of that now, don't hesitate to call Reed or Donna or myself. So the next slide.
Councilmember Perrow.
Do we know what our local unemployment stats are, our local unemployment claims?
We do, and that is on a further slide.
That's right, it is.
The slide right in front of us.
Thank you.
Sure. Donna will get to that, when we get to that graph.
There are a lot of bullet points, I'm sorry to remember every one of them.
No, that's fine.
Oh yeah, that's right, that's right. That's, well, maybe that's why I was thinking of it. You did consider it.
Yeah. As you can see on the, on slide three, there are more bullet points for "we don't know what we don't know." So what we don't know is what is going to happen with our anchor institutions, which are, which are our colleges and universities and the hospital, about how they will do things differently. There is uncertainty regarding how many college students will return to campus in the fall, or will there be an option for people to do online learning as they have been doing this past semester. We don't know what future business models look like. There's a lot of uncertainty regarding whether people will continue for some time and maybe a long time working remotely versus, versus working in a brick-and-mortar place of business. We don't know impacts of reductions by the state, particularly for annual police funding, personal property tax reduction subsidy, which is $5.5 million. The police funding is $3.1 million, highway maintenance funding, and education funding. We don't know the impacts of the pandemic on how consumers will behave in the marketplace. We don't know if you have in mind any actions to make changes to any existing tax rates, one way or the other. And we certainly don't know when a vaccine will be available and the economic impact, should there be a recurrence of the virus. So the same way, I asked, is there anything that we do know that we haven't considered? Are there other things that we haven't considered?
Councilmembers, any thoughts? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My thoughts are that with regard to gauging what our trends are, we generally rely on the receipts that come in after the business has completed whatever cycle it's in. Is there any opportunity, without being unduly burdensome, to solicit key businesses in the community to provide us as to where they are, even though it's prior to the time they report those receipts, so we know whether or not we're on track, behind, or doing better than we expected?
That's a, that's a great question. So we have engaged on business surveys throughout the community for a variety of different sectors. You know, obviously, we're primarily focusing on restaurants and other lodging, and we are getting feedback, you know, sort of anecdotally from that. So it's very much falling in line with what we would expect, what we have projected.
Thank you, that's excellent. Thank you for the effort.
Well, the other thing we're looking at as well is our business license taxes. This year, they're going to be due May 20th, but a lot of businesses will file and report as early as March 1st. So we're kind of watching as those come in as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further thoughts? All right, thank you. I don't think there's any.
Donna.
Okay, your next slide. Better standing up. Our sources of information, we've updated this since our last presentation. Obviously, we looked at the same things. Some things we've added here is Virginia Tech has done a weekly discussion with finance directors across the state and any, really, anybody that wants to join in. And we're just kind of gleaning information from each other as far as, you know, how other localities are rebalancing their budgets, what they're looking at for their revenues. So that's been very helpful. The other couple of things we added is our Virginia Employment Commission. We've started looking at those unemployment numbers more closely. And then, we had a call, Marjette set up with the Virginia Restaurant Lodging and Travel Association, and just had a conversation with them about what they're seeing in our area and across the state, and some good news and some bad news from them, and just the trends that they're seeing. So that was, that was something else we at least could ask some questions.
A question, Ms.
Tony. How about the Regional Business Alliance? Have they been a source of information? Have they been a partner in this at all?
I think they've held some meetings as well.
So they do something called Wednesdays at One, and they have done those since, I believe, maybe the end of March, that have included, I think they've been using Zoom as their platform for those one-hour briefings on what's going on in the community. They've had topics such as what's happening with the nonprofits, what's happening with small business. They have engaged some national and state leaders in sharing their thoughts on the economy. So there is the, so the regional economic developers have been coordinating with the Business Alliance, and Marjette Upsher is actually the Chair of the Regional Economic Developers Group. So yes, they should be on this list.
But is there any information that we can glean from them? Could they help us poll some of these businesses, or is there, is there a way that we can use them to help formulate some of our, you know, our data?
So, I'll say, I talk with Marjette on a weekly basis. We're on a long-term recovery team together, and we talk about those type of things. Yeah, and you're right, she talks about, you know, things that she learns and what she's learned from talking to businesses. So that, that really should be on this list.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I guess a big section should be some form of lobbying entity, you know, because when we're looking at the fact of, you know, we're hearing from businesses, we don't have to really necessarily hear from them, all we've got to do is drive by their parking lot, you know, and see it's vacant. We drive by Liberty University and see 15,000 students that used to be there is now a few hundred. I mean, we don't have to do commission mini-studies. What we need to do is start to lobby to say, we have five people that are Lynchburg citizens that are in the hospital. We need to do something different as Lynchburg, because we can get all the information from every government source there is until we have some pushback, just like fortunately happened just yesterday in, in court, where the governor tried to usurp unconstitutional authority and was stopped. And until we do that, to say, let's get back to Lynchburg as safely as we can, obviously, but let's, let's lead, let's do something. When we have five, it just, it kind of blows my mind when I see that we have five Lynchburg citizens that are in the hospital right now with COVID, sad for them, five out of 82,000. What can we do? You know, that is something that I would love to see us kind of figure out something that we can do proactively, safely of course, but proactively.
If I can respond to that, I think it's funny that you bring that up, because there's just an email that went out to the Virginia First Cities Board of Directors that asked exactly what, what the Virginia First City should do to, to, to come out of this, basically, and what steps should be taken. So.
And I greatly appreciate you bringing that forward last time with regarding the elections. You know, council, in a bipartisan fashion, said, hey, let's not throw out thousands of ballots, let's continue normal protocol. And I'm glad the Virginia Senate said the same thing. You know, when we have things, we need to kind of be mindful, and it's not just a circling, and I'm not just attacking because I'm another party, nor would I circle wagons, this was my party. I mean, but what we really need to do is look objectively, and what can we do? You know, again, not circling wagons, that's what I've seen too much of. So, anyway, what we can do proactively, I think that would be great, maybe Virginia First Cities can, can help with that.
And, and another item was the proposals put forward by Senator Tommy Norman about regionalizing.
Absolutely.
Because I think, as he said, is what's a problem in Fairfax and Arlington is not a problem in Bristol or Lynchburg.
And I just saw today, I think the press just wrote about the fact of UVA. I mean, we're in a medical pandemic, but UVA is furloughing and cutting salaries 20% on their UVA medical. I mean, this is medical. And so some of these things, and this is something that lots of our citizens, if they can't be met safely at, at Centra Health, they go to UVA. And if UVA is furloughing in, in a medical pandemic, something to me seems very askew. So again, I'm trying to get political, I want to just get, figure out how we can get back to work, and so we can not just gather information that people say their parking lots are empty, there's no customers, because nobody can go, you know, and I understand, you know, lots of fear. I think we need to bring a little bit of factual analysis rather than just simply stoked in fear, so.
Councilmember Wright, you had a question?
No, ma'am, I don't. I'd rather get on with the conversation.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Councilmember Helgeson makes a good point. Certainly, we're dealing with data, statistics, predictions, and gauging what we do, how we cut, if we cut, and all of that is dependent upon what the mindset of our citizens and our businesses are, and when they can go forward and how they can go forward. But I'd like to point out that it's been mentioned that we need to rely on data, or data is scientific evidence, and that is what we need, that is what has been promoted, testing, 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 so we know who's sick and who is not, where they are. And with that sort of confidence, to have that information is what's going to facilitate persons to go back into restaurants and go back into businesses, knowing they can do so safely. As long as that information is not known, and there's no tracking to know who may have had contact with the person who's symptomatic or been diagnosed, everybody is going to have the fear that's going to shut us all down. So I think the formula that's been laid out by those scientists and medical people who know is what we need to rely on and not speculate, that if we just say, okay, push the button, we're ready to go, that's not going to be the solution.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Any other thoughts? Thank you, Ms. Witt. Please continue.
Slide five, this is the initial local unemployment claims per 1,000 population for a sampling of the Virginia cities. And you can see that Lynchburg is the dark line there, and that we're pretty much similar to a lot of other Virginia cities. The one anomaly there is Danville, and we believe that was the closing of their Goodyear plant. So they are kind of an anomaly there, but we're, we're kind of in the middle of the pack. On the next slide, and this is one we added since we sent this to you, and you do have that slide in front of you, this is the Central Virginia Workforce Development Area Top Ten Occupations with Greatest Number of Initial Unemployment Claims. And these are March 14th through April 18th. And I don't think it's a surprise, the largest one is the food preparation and serving-related occupations with office administrative support occupations in there below them. So I think this just kind of gives you a little, a few numbers that kind of matches what you already thought and what you already knew.
So with this, it's in central Virginia, so it's like our 250, 300,000 MSA is what we're looking at with this?
Well, yes.
Okay. And a lot of the employees are actually probably, since a lot of the restaurants are in Lynchburg, right? I mean, there's no way to say what's actually Lynchburg. So we couldn't take the 14,872 that you have on here, divide by what our Lynchburg workforce is?
Well, the Lynchburg number, we've got just over 5,000 that are in the initial unemployment claims, I think, and that's through April 18th. But that number, if you look at it, who is reoccurring, implying on a weekly basis for unemployment, those numbers have dropped off considerably. So I thought that's kind of good news. And we're thinking our workforce base on how they figure this is between 32,000 and 35,000.
So fif, almost fifteen, 14,000, I added them, 14,872 divided by 32,000?
Well, and I think that's a little skewed, because we have so many people that come into Lynchburg to work, but our actual base of Lynchburg citizens working in Lynchburg.
Okay, so, so, so the 32,000 is Lynchburg citizens and this?
Working in Lynchburg.
This close to 15,000 unemployment number.
This is, yeah, yeah, I was going to say, that's not the same dataset. This is the whole area, right?
That's the way the state produces that data, it's the initial unemployment claims is based on the city, and then the MSA Y is the larger area for the.
So one item that you had mentioned, you said 5,000 Lynchburg, so a better dataset would be 5,000 divided by the 32, which would be about 15%.
Yes.
Unemployment in a matter of the last month.
Yes.
So 15% of our 32,000 have been forcibly unemployed over the last few weeks. Okay.
Okay, this next slide. This is a summary of the guidelines provided by the President for opening up America again. So I know we've all heard about the phases and the phases of opening, and this just kind of summarizes this up, based on whether you're looking at individuals, employers, or specific types of employers. As I go forward and talk about how we made our assumptions for revenue, we're going to reference these phases. So I just really wanted to give you kind of the context of what we were looking at when we talk about these phases. So one of them is the downward trajectory.
Trajectory.
Thank you. For 14 days, that's before we start the phases, and then as you progress through the phases, there's that 14-day period. So just think about that as we talk about, going on to the next slide for our big-picture revenue assumptions. So.
Perrow said, with regarding the Virginia First Cities, the regional approach, this is assuming, you know, a national guideline versus a state edict, and then not having a state edict that applies in Alexandria equally as, you know, Campbell County in the, you know, agricultural area.
Right. And I read an article this morning, as Governor Northam is looking at what that looks like, and so obviously, we're paying really close attention to that as well. At this time, this is what we have to go on. So, and this is how we made our revenue assumptions. This is with a phased reopening, depending on downward COVID-19 trends for 14 days, consistent with Governor Northam and President Trump's, their directions, okay? So for first quarter, for our more consumption-type revenues, we assume Virginia moves from phase one to phase three by the end of the first quarter, which includes most businesses open with relaxed social distancing. Our second quarter, phase three continues with social distancing and consumer behavior driven by individual health concerns, with businesses pretty much open. And then our third and fourth quarters, our assumption was, we're anticipating more normal consumer spending. But again, this is what we're watching really closely, but this is how we made our big assumptions quarter by quarter.
How are other localities, especially thinking about the second quarter, which presumably is, as experts have described, when the second flare-up of COVID might occur in the autumn?
Well, right now, the finance directors, especially off this meeting that we have every Wednesday with Virginia Tech, they're pretty much ready, second quarter, for things to be open. And part of that is people are anxious, and it seems like people are wanting to get out and get back to normal as safely as possible, of course. But they're saying that second quarter, the plan is that things are going to be much more open than what they are now.
Okay. Yeah, fingers crossed.
I, I'm the Chair of our Fall Finance, or Finance Forum, I cannot talk you all. I'm the Chair for the Fall Conference for VGFOA, and I did talk to the Omni yesterday, and just to make sure that our Fall Conference is in October, and it's like, what can I expect? Do you all, what are you all planning? What are you thinking? And he said, right now, they're hoping and planning for their conferences to start opening the end of May to the beginning of June. So they're thinking things are going to be getting more positive as well. So I thought that was good news. I think I'm always looking for good news. So our revenue assumptions, again, we just got those March early numbers. We're seeing that our grocery store sales are up, our home improvement store sales are up, and our online sales, those are way up. So, and it's nice that the Wayfair Act was in place, so we are getting our share of those revenues, so that was really important. Restaurants, if you are a drive-through restaurant, you're pretty, holding pretty steady for what you were at this time last year. And then for full service, that were changed to curbside pickup and/or delivery, sales are down. Again, March was a split month, so it's, it's hard to really see the full impact there, but those are down, and we projected they would be down. So it's pretty consistent with what we were thinking we would see, so. So as we go through these revenue projections now, kind of one by one, what you need to look at is, I've provided the actual 2019, our revised 2020 numbers that we went through a couple of weeks ago, what we originally proposed for '21, and then what we're revising for '21 and the change. So what you're going to see is, we've pretty much taken out the growth that we thought we were going to see over the year. So, and then made further reductions from that. So we tried to make these very conservative, meaning worst-case scenario. So we'll go through these one at a time. We're going to start with the consumption-type revenues. So for local sales and use tax, our first quarter projections, we're projecting to be down 15%, which is about $612,000. And then in quarter two, down 3%, which is about $133,000. If you annualize that, it's a 5% reduction. But again, we're thinking that towards the end of September, things are really going to start opening back up and be closer to getting back to normal. In meals tax for quarter one, we're projecting 15% down or 4% annualized. So by that second quarter, we're thinking that, that restaurants are going to be picking back up, they'll be open carefully, social distancing, it'll look different, but that our revenues should be coming back to normal. Lodging tax, quarter one, we're down 38% with 11% annualized loss. Amusement tax for, projection for quarter one, we're down 53%, which is about $140,000, where that's 12% annualized. And again, if you will compare these from your actual 2019, you'll see that we've pulled out the growth that we anticipated, and we're even further down than that. So I think these are worst-case scenario. Business license for 2021, you got to remember, these will be due May 1st of 2021, based on revenues collected for calendar year 2020. So this is really a key here. So we're, we've got a decrease in tax of 10% annualized. And historically, because we budget this very conservative, we get more than we budget. So we took out that growth and, or counted on our collection staff to help us here, but we think this one's going to be down for next year.
So, I don't know if you're going to talk about the allowance or not. It's interesting that the allowances were positive, that's just because you've cut your numbers, so therefore, you don't have to have as much of allowance, and therefore, your allowance turns into a positive number. That's interesting.
That's correct, because we, we kept our allowance at 2%. So if we reduced our revenue projection, then that actually reduced the allowance for doubtful accounts.
Well, take it where we can get it.
That's right. So the other non-dedicated revenues, bank stop tax for revised 2020, that is our actual number we received for fiscal year 2020, $753,786. So for our revised 2021, we reduced that to be flat with our actual 2020. False alarms, we're reducing that $1,500 for our July collections, not much, but wanted you to see it. Fines and forfeiture, due to our courts being closed, we've reduced that $62,500. Charges for services, and this is for your non-dedicated revenues, this is reductions for the Commonwealth attorney fines and fees, our jail fee and our e-summons fee to about $239,000.
This is in any way sort of a parallel to 2008, but how much did our revenues decline in 2008 as a percentage overall?
It was different.
Sure.
I can't tell you what that overall was. Our consumption-type revenues were really impacted, but it was different. I don't know.
I guess I'm more curious, was it worse? I guess I'm more curious, was it worse than what's being projected here?
I, no, I don't, no, I don't think so, because our courts were open. So many more things were open for business. I mean, sales tax was down, those type of things, but, um, but it was different.
Okay.
Well, in 2008, 2009, 2010, it was like a slow drain where everything was just sinking. And it, and so we had to sink with it, the, um, the city budget and everything else. And this is just kind of a sudden shock. So the question I'm going to have later on, after you finish this, is concerns about cash flow, because it looks like a big hit right in Q1. And whereas in 2007, in 2008 and so forth, it was just spread out so far. This is very sudden.
Right. And, and I will, I can go ahead and tell you, um, all of these revenue projections and loss of revenue projections, um, I've got two staff that are working continually monitoring money coming in and money going out, and they're projecting out our cash flows through the end of calendar year 2020 to make sure that, um, what we're projecting is even feasible. So we're good right now and we're good with this. So, but they're updating these on a weekly basis as we see what our accounts payable is and our payments that go out, as well as the monies that's coming in.
This, when we talk about now this 2021, you've made some adjustments for this year ending 2020.
Right, yes.
And the, the way you stated that to, to make sure that we can even make those assessments, are we close on that or are we?
Oh, no, we're good.
We're good, okay.
We're good.
You just gave me a little, the way you said that.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. And we are, we're, we're, we've looked at through the end of the fiscal year, but we've also stretched that out to the end of the calendar year, making sure that with, if these revenues come in as we've projected them down or worse, that we still have cash to, to go forward. And that, and that's why those May collections are so important, because if you think about it, those are our last big due dates before we, and that takes us through the summer as we make payroll and debt payments and those type of, you know, large payments. That gets us to our next due date in November. So those are why those are so impactful for May and the personal property tax in June. So as we look at our dedicated revenues, um, charges for services, um, this is down about $88,000, which again is below what we actually got in 19. This is reduction for our police, for the schools resource officers program, off-duty police fees, library fines and fees and museums. Cause again, these places are still closed, um, there's not as many off-duty jobs, the libraries are closed, museums are closed, those type of things. Residential disposal fees, um, we have not changed this, um, from what we originally proposed. And that's why I wanted to make sure I put it on here so that you would see that. And, and, and we will, it's, it is on the list.
To, to not increase it.
So, um, yes.
Twenty-some percent.
Presentation to you on, um, so we are proposing that council meet on May 5th, but now that the election has been moved to the 19th and not meet on May 19th. So next week on May 5th, we are planning on dedicating the majority of that work session to a discussion regarding the future of trash.
So in this revised budget though, I wanted you to, I make sure you understood that we do have the rate at $15.02 a month and it's starting in January of 2021. So that's what's included in those numbers.
So with that, just where you have it presented, so it's about a million in 2019, it went up 40% and then the total is going up like 60% in those two years. Right? Am I looking at that right with our other?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay. So the difference would be going from the 1.4 million to the 1.67 million.
Yes.
That would have the discussion on with the increase in fees. Okay, thank you.
And then parking revenue, um, we revised this down by $45,000, mostly because, um, we've got the free hourly parking continuing downtown. Miscellaneous revenue, um, about $22,000. This is reductions for museums, library, community market, offset by additional funds from friends of the library, um, to fully fund the volunteer coordinator part-time position. So I just wanted to make sure you see all of those, but those are our dedicated revenues. Then as we look at, um, some of our bigger revenues, so real property, of course, what we bill is based on assessments. So we don't have a change to that, but what we did is we increased our uncollectible from two and a half percent to 5%, thinking that, um, that November payment might be impacted. For delinquent, um, real property taxes, we've also assumed that we would have less delinquent collections. So, um, that's, that's about a $2.2 million hit right there. Personal property, our local portion, what we've done is we've reduced the growth that we thought we would see by $875,000 and then took an additional $100,000 to a full 5% reduction. So you will see that our revised number is about $300,000 less than what we actually collected in 19. And then for that allowance, um, this is again, one that looks kind of weird because we kept our allowance at 3%, but as we reduce our revenue, that reduces our uncollectible. And then again, for a delinquent personal property taxes, we assumed less delinquent collections by $140,000. Our motor vehicle licenses, we did not change that because this is not due until June 5th, 2021. And, um, we think by then we're good and that those should come in, um, as we anticipate. And that is $6,446,138 reduction from what was originally proposed for 21. So, um, this also from expenditure directives, oh, sorry about that. July 1st through September 30th, we will extend the hiring freeze that is currently in place except for public safety. We're going to extend the spending freeze on all personnel related, non-personnel related expenditures. So we're really counting on our departments to be very, very careful on their expenditures and also to extend the training and travel freeze. This is going to be what's limited based on phased opening as well. So we're, we're extending this from what we're currently doing into the first quarter. Okay. So this is how we rebalance the 21 proposed budget on the expenditure side. So you'll see, we started with a loss of the $6.4 million. Now, the ones that have asterisks, these are items that were put on the list by city council. So those are things that we have already taken in consideration. Okay? So the first thing off the plate was the 3% general wage increase of $2 million. And also we would delay the phase two of the corn fairy market adjustments, and that was $946,000. This next item, um, is kind of amazing. So this, um, GLTC for operating expenses, the local match was $1,642,346. They have gotten $7 million from the federal government to use for operations. So, um, Brian Booth let me know that they are returning 1 million, well, not returning, we didn't give it to him yet, but they're not going to need $1,142,346. And what this does, it leaves $500,000, um, as an oper, local operating match, just in case a local match to state funds is required. And what Brian has let me know is in first quarter adjustments, if they don't have to have that local match, they will be returning that half a million dollars.
So are you saying GLTC is not going to cause the city of Lynchburg anything in 2021?
That is correct. Now, we still have.
That's a nice indirect help from the government that.
Yes.
Trickle down well.
Yes, this, this is a happy thing.
Yeah. Wow.
CIP, now we still have a local match for the, um, couple of projects they have, um, in the CIP, and that's about $80,000. But, um, as far as operating, if you remember, they also were going to need $319,957 out of their reserve that we have. They were going to need that as well to maintain their operating. They're not going to need that either, so I plug that back into that reserve. Okay? The $30,142 to eliminate council salary increases, that was on the list, um, by Councilman Nelson. The $75,000, this reduces funding for implementing the Safety and Security Task Force. It does leave a balance of $50,000 to do some items in City Hall. $50,000 to eliminate the health insurance consultant for employees. $700,000 to reduce the transfer to Lynchburg City Schools. This would be in addition to the 1.5 million that was already in proposed.
So where does that number come from and what have the schools, what's the alignment been with the schools?
So, um, this is, we knew that we needed to spread the impact, quite frankly, and 700,000, we just landed on a number of 700,000, quite honestly. It was not scientific. It unfortunately, and I regret this, is not based on a conversation that I had with the superintendent.
Until today.
In a sense, we should actually put a big asterisk by that because we would still need to, we still need to have a conversation with the schools about that, that number and how it'd impact their operations.
And you know, I don't.
When I say impact, asterisk, I, I don't mean like in the list sense. I mean, it should be added to the list, I think, certainly for, for discussion, but, um, but I don't think, I'm certainly, I wouldn't be comfortable without consulting with the schools before.
Okay.
Before, uh, proving that.
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure I'm clear, that is different than the money we had set aside for these, the study, the, was it $500,000?
Yes. Yeah, I'm going to get to that.
Okay. This is a different amount to make sure.
Yes. This would be out of operations. Yes. $75,000, uh, for the economic development to eliminate funding for the projects they had included for the 2040 master plan. $60,000 for the Public Works Mini Sweeper. $2,760, this is reduced hours for the part-time volunteer coordinator position at the library. The friends are funding that at, it was at 24 hours, I believe, and this is reducing it to 20 hours. So we took that additional money. $34,896, this eliminates the new part-time accreditation position for police and $39,773, which eliminates the new part-time accreditation position for fire. $12,383, this is in, yep.
That's a good question. That's why those two positions.
Does it affect their accreditation standards? I know we have certain things we're working on, do they just do in-house for that? How does that work?
I believe they would continue and both of the chiefs are here, but I believe they would continue to use sworn officers to fill these positions. Yes, nods from the chiefs.
So it's still will help to put their accreditation?
Correct.
Okay.
$12,383, this would delay the start of the new part-time positions in park recre, parks and recreation for the neighborhood center, um, until October 1st of 2020. $61,315 out of social services, this, these are local savings. We would delay the start of the three new full-time positions until.
I'm sorry, the slide hasn't changed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
Here, click me. Thank you.
She's on a roll.
Click me. Um, give her, give her a job. $61,315, this would be social services, local savings to delay the start of the three new full-time positions until January 1st, 2021. And then this 500,000, this eliminates the addition that we had first proposed to the task force on the future pre-K-12 education and beyond. For 2021, we had origin, originally put an additional half a million dollars aside, so we are now taking that out. And then the next item is the 700,000 that we, that was originally in there. We had 1.2 million, we used a half a million for 2020 when we rebalanced. This uses the other $700,000 out of that task force, um, which means, uh, it brings the reserve to zero. So that's how we got the 6 million, 6, 446,138 expenditure reduction and use of reserves to a zero balance. Okay. Oh, go ahead.
Are there other, you know, last year we had a, uh, I know every year there's lots of consultant studies and fees and whatnot. Are there others that, you know, I just think of last year we had the airport, uh, and I realize that's an enterprise fund, but we had the airport study for lots of money. Um, I realize that's airport money. You know, probably, especially with an empty airport, I, I got a feeling authorities are probably dead on arrival. So are there other studies like this, uh, 75,000 for this master plan that are in there that we could curtail as well?
That wasn't 75, that was to implement some operating type pieces, some small pieces of the 2040 master plan. So that wasn't an additional master plan.
So what about other master plans or plans or consultant reports that we could?
The only one.
Pull out of the, uh, it seems like there's lots of them in there at different places for all sundry things, I realize, but.
The only thing would be, uh, my, in CIP, there might be some engineering studies and things like that for future projects. I can't.
I know for, um, Parks and Rec, there's a Parks master plan that's in pay-as-you-go projects. That's the only ones that I can think of.
Design work and that sort of thing, but there's not studies and things like that.
That's the only study I can think of off the top of my head.
Because some of the, okay, it'd be good to make sure we kind of scrub through that as best as possible, just that's, I think, an easy, kind of a lower hanging fruit.
Okay.
We also are just working harder at doing some of that work in-house versus doing it out of house.
Absolutely.
This question, is there a recovery plan for the event based on economic development now in our country? Is there any need for any type of, we're going to work it in-house, but do they know what they need if they don't know what they need? Type of thing for an economic recovery plan after we get through these phases, uh, after we assess consumer behavior, after we assess who can open at social distancing, after we assess, is there any economic development type of planning going on?
So I think that is part of the work of the long-term recovery group that meets at least once a week. So that's made up of the CFO, the Director of Economic Development, the Director of Community Development. And the Commissioner of Revenue. So that is a work in progress along with the city assessor.
We, we haven't really gotten that far, but, um, but you're right. I mean, I think that's one of those things we don't know yet. So as we think about the economic impacts for COVID-19, of course, staff is absolutely going, we're going to monitor these, the heck out of these revenues. Um, we're, we really have to monitor these as closely as possible. Following the receipt of the July 2020 meals, lodging and amusement taxes on September 21st and sales tax on October 5th, um, we're going to have a better idea of what things are opening, what things are looking like, um, how our consumer-driven taxes are performing. So I want to come back to city council at the first meeting in October, which will be October 13th, to be able to give an update. And then if things aren't recovering as hoped, um, then we need to look at, um, expenditure adjustments and I'll have a plan of what we need to do going forward.
Sort of generally speaking, how the city's doing financially in the interim, right? We're not, we're not going to wait another five months before we have this.
Oh, yeah.
Conversation again.
So if, we aren't going to have much information to report because of the way revenues are received, but as we receive revenues, we won't give you what are.
We have a monthly report, finance.
That's, that's, that's what I'm asking about.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
I just want to make sure that we're still going to be getting.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. But this would be a main update where we may have to make changes again to the 21 budget.
Understood.
So, um, when we get to that October 13th council meeting, um, we will know more because obviously as time passes, you get to know more. So, um, we'll, we'll know what came in for our 2020 business license payments. I'll know what came in for our personal property tax payments. I'll know what came in for our real estate tax payments on due, on May 15th. I'll know our July meals, lodging and amusement and sales tax payments. We should have a better idea of what our consumer behavior is. We're going to know how many of our college students are back, what, what college look like for university. like for University of Lynchburg, Liberty University, Randolph College, we're gonna know more. College graduations, by October 13th, we'll know if Liberty had their graduation on September 11th and what the impact was, what we're expecting that to be to our lodging tax. We'll know if the University of Lynchburg, I know they're trying to work to schedule theirs now. We'll know what that is by October 13th.
Only end of October.
Huh?
Only end of October.
That's gonna be the end of October now? Okay, so I won't know that one, but at least we'll know if it's scheduled and it really looks like it's gonna happen. So that will help. For Lynchburg City Schools, you know, every summer we have a bump for back-to-school spending. So it's gonna, we're gonna know more about how the city schools came back and what that looks like. You know, there's usually that sales tax holiday in the summer, those type of things. We're gonna know if those things happened or not, and so that's gonna be more information that we have.
Let me interrupt for a second. I think Councilwoman Wright raises a really good point that we're talking, I mean, initially, I think staff was thinking we'll come back in October, but I think we will know some things from month to month. So I'm gonna suggest, and Donna might not like this, that we report to council at the second meeting of the month, any updates that we have to revenues, so that you and our community are made aware of, you know, how this really is evolving.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Yeah, because we will have to pivot differently. So we'll have some additional information along the way. So we will make that a regular part, well, whoever's here will make it a regular part of the fiscal year 2021 council meetings.
I can easily do that. So just some additional things that we would do if the economy is not improving as we anticipate. Of course, we will extend the hiring freeze, the spending freeze, we'll extend travel and training freezes. We have not touched the fund balance that's currently proposed in there, above 10%. So I don't know if I want to use all of it, but maybe 1.1 million of it would be available if we needed to use that. These aren't in any order. Possible return of additional GLT funds if it's available, so that half a million dollars we may get back. We might need to reduce the general fund pay-as-you-go capital improvement program projects. Staff furloughs may be necessary, and then, of course, there'd be other things if we need to make drastic measures.
And we would anticipate staff furlough days to spread them out over the fiscal year, or however many months are left following, if there is a downturn, and we need to pivot and make that adjustment.
And then this.
As far as adjusting for the pay-as-you-go capital improvement projects, that would be last year's dollars.
Yeah.
And they're one-time money, so you're talking about just purely for a cash flow standpoint?
Yeah, it would be one-time money that we would use if we were really, really in dire streets.
Got it. Okay, so that's, that's, because it's in violation of multiple financial policies that I'm aware of.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
And then this next slide, I would.
Just one of the.
Yes, sir.
So the staff furlough days, you know, you have on here some of the guidelines with regarding the hiring freeze, with the exemption of public safety, so I imagine furloughs would exempt public safety as well.
That would be my recommendation. To be determined. I mean, hopefully we won't have to go there.
So, so right now, there is no plan to furlough in 2021, and that decision would be made sometime around the middle of October?
That's correct.
Okay. That's good information.
Councilmember Nelson?
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna sort of piggyback on what I said earlier about the confidence that will be needed to have within the market. I think the information I heard yesterday and heard this morning again was that Virginia as a whole was very meager in its efforts to test and to track contact. And obviously, until that's done in a robust way, the degree of confidence among the consumers is, could be very marginal. In the meetings that you have participated with involving Virginia Tech and others that are assessing where we are and where we'll be, is there a projection as to when Virginia, and particularly, I'm concerned, but this part of Virginia, will have sufficient testing and tracking so as to give that confidence to our population and our consumers, so they know that when they go out and they leave their homes and they want to resume normal past business practices, they can do so safely?
I have, I have not heard that.
Is that gonna be first quarter, second quarter?
Yeah, I'm, just in the random things that we've heard through these various meetings, they're trying to ramp that up now. So hopefully by, you know, early summer, that would be in place.
Okay. Related to that, obviously, we look forward to all of the college students from all of the six colleges and universities returning. But that's a huge unknown, if any percentage of any of those students are contagious. Do you know if any of the colleges and universities are implementing some sort of medical requirement, just like the schools do before a child enters public schools, to have certain vaccines, whether or not the students who are actually physically coming back and participating in our economy have been tested and shown to be free of contagious illnesses?
I read an article yesterday that went through some of the larger colleges across the state, and every single one of them said, you know, they're meeting now to determine what it can look like for students to come back. And all of them mentioned that, you know, they're going to be looking at different scenarios based on how open the state is and that type of thing. So it's gotta be a piece of it.
It's such a large component for Lynchburg, but could be so disastrous if that element is not there, and, or even if the public perceives it's not there.
Right.
They're not gonna want to go out and resume the business as usual. I think that's a, in terms of promoting ourselves, that's something that we should have a conversation with, with college presidents and the powers that be, at least among our institutions.
Yeah, I agree, because even with Phase Three, it, it still is cautious.
You're right, I just, I look a little differently at the testing. I could, one, I think the testing has gone up tremendously. You read the, watch WSCT every day, and it's gone up, the testing has gone up and up and up. And, and I guess the fallacy of the testing is the fact of if you test on a Friday and you're negative, but you get it on Saturday, what good is the test? So, so especially if something is as highly contagious as originally suspected and presented. So testing, I think, is, you know, there's lots of things that people hang their hat on. I don't think that's, I think they've increased a lot of testing, but until you test every day or every hour, and it takes a long time to make sure those results come back to be effective and efficacious, you can't test somebody every day. And so with that, I think, you know, I, I can understand that concern, but I think we should, again, look at things factually, not, you know, I just, I just, I, I don't put as much stock in the testing, and I can understand that. And then to, again, I, I hope that we don't go out and go down these paths of vilifying a select group. You know, a long time ago, or a few months ago, when the front page of the paper said, you know, a school and their students were reckless, you know, I went over there several times after to see that they weren't. It was, it was empty, it was a ghost town. So let's not just vilify and, and say somebody brings something in from outside just to call somebody something, you know? I think we're all in this together. We can't be attacking a piece of our economy because we've just looked at the fact of our numbers. We, we really do appreciate having 15,000 extra students come in that fill up our hotels, that go to our restaurants, that rent our properties, that help fund our whole budget. You know, without that being here, you know, I just, I just, I just don't like to see us going down to vilify or say, hey, they gotta do something. I'm sure they want to be safe, they want to be healthy, just like all of us do. We care about our health. I care about my health. I care about my safety and my family. I don't want to get sick. So, you know, I think everybody else is, if we treat people the same way, you know, lots of times, you know, it's interesting when we look at what government said from the CDC on down, they first said, oh, this is no big deal. Oh, it's nothing. Go do whatever you want, it's nothing. Then they came in and said, oh, no, no, 2.2 million people are gonna die. Then they said, oh, wait a minute, it's 240,000. Well, it's 100. Now, I mean, so with that, having somebody that dictates what we do, other than ourselves, is a little, it's pushing it a little bit. I, I think we all care about our safety and our health, so. I just don't like to see us vilifying our largest employer and, and students that are coming into town, whether it be Liberty, or whether it be Lynchburg College, or Randolph.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It may be that I was not clear in my comments. I think Councilmember Helgason makes a good point, that someone who tests fine today may be contaminated tomorrow, and that's a problem. What I would like is for those colleges and universities, which, as Jeff has said, are viable contributors to our economy, they need to be here safely, and we welcome them safely. And that is a conversation that the college presidents need to have, and that's all I was suggesting, was that we need to have that conversation. In terms of vilification, I'm not sure that anybody in this, this room mentioned vilification of anybody. It's a solution and security and comfort level that I'm seeking, not trying to, to rewrite history and revisit somebody's comments somewhere at some time. That's, that's not productive and constructive, and I want, I want this conversation to be productive and constructive for everybody's interests.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess just, only because I, I just don't want that, the comments of, of Councilmember Helgason to sort of go unresponded to, I think it is important to note that it is a, it is a fact that we don't have enough testing in Virginia. That's just a fact. And if we want consumers to go back out in the marketplace and, and engage in commerce, open their businesses, participate in their neighborhoods, they need to have assurance that they can get readily tested for the virus should they develop symptoms. And we also, you know, there are two types of tests. There's a test for the virus as it's ongoing, and there's the antibody test to determine whether you have had it after the fact. And it is vital that we have those tests, and obviously, this is the big national conversation, and we're not gonna change it here in Lynchburg City Council Chamber, but I want to make sure that folks who are watching know that Lynchburg does believe in science. We do believe in evidence and data, and, and it's not just about what feels good, that we will look to the experts, the public health experts, the epidemiologists, for their studied, thoughtful recommendations before we do anything with our most precious resource, which is our people.
Thank you, and I think we all fall on sometimes different sides of what comments are pertinent and applicable, and I believe that because there is such a stringent social distancing policy, and because conversations of reckless decisions were brought up early, the impact has been minimized in our community, and that's a good thing. And so the fact I heard five, I don't know exactly what today's numbers are, but I do know that I know people that are personally affected by COVID-19. I do know that life matters, and I do know that we have the opportunity to preserve life and safety and have precaution in our leadership roles. And I know as one person, I will do everything I need to do to protect citizens and their lives in this city, because we can't go to restaurants if we're six feet under. And so I think people need to keep that in mind. I don't have an expendable number of residents who are expendable in our city, whether they're visiting, whether they're nine-month residents, or whether they are 12-month residents. So I just want to make that clear, since we are having these conversations. Thank you, Ms. Witt.
Just one more thing. At the January 12th council meeting, I'd also like to give another major update, especially if things are not back to business the way we anticipate by December 31st. And again, we would be looking to make more drastic adjustments in this budget, because they would be necessary, because my revenues would not have held the way I anticipated. So again, there's just a, a list here of possibilities, is if we would have to cut more out of this budget. These are just some additional things that we would look at. It's some of the same things, that'd just be additional cuts. The only new one on here would be a potential reduction in force, including the related service deliveries. Because if our revenues got to a point that we're really not back to where we were hoping, then I don't know how we could provide all the services that we continue to provide.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder had a question.
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it, with the information and the efforts that the staff has gone through to make these adjustments. I mean, the budget was so beautiful, so, but COVID has changed a lot of things in our country. So I appreciate the efforts and working and trying to give us the best numbers as possible to you and the staff. We really appreciate that. I have a couple of concerns. I know these are challenging times, and I understand we have to make some challenging decisions. I am concerned in reference to the, the cuts for the salary that we expect for our staff members, 3%, that we were expecting, as well as the, the, the corn berry, the, the, the adjustments for that as well. So I'm so sorry that they are on the list, but I do understand. Now, hopefully, if the country gets back on track and things get, as we do these projections of things get better, so I appreciate the timelines and also the monthly updates and things of nature, and the different benchmarks that you've set in place, so I appreciate that, so you can keep us abreast of how things are going. Is there any way, once we do the budget, as far as what we see later on, like in October, December or so, is there any way possible we can make some adjustments then to salaries? As far as either institute the 3% then, or, or some kind of a bonus of some sort to plant, the staff members? I'm really concerned about some of those hard-filled positions, you know, we all continue to have with our police department, with our fire department, they continue to have challenges in retaining staff. I'm always concerned about that. Is there any way we can either adjust theirs or, or do something, once we see the revenues coming in, come and make some, some adjustments, maybe December or so, or January, or, once we set the budget, how firm is that? And once we review that, is there possibility to come back to that for some adjustments in salaries or bonus of some sort of that nature?
Oh, absolutely. And that's, that's a council decision. So as, as we monitor these revenues, I would love to come back and say things are better than I anticipated, which would give council some other decisions to make.
Okay, so like, okay, I'm sorry.
What I might suggest is, as you begin to go through the list, if there are items that you want to revisit mid-fiscal year, such as salary adjustments or anything else on this list, I suggest you say, can we put that on a list for mid-year of fiscal year 2021? And it will all be very dependent upon how revenues are rebounding or not.
Yes, Councilmember Para?
I think that's a really good suggestion. I was gonna, I was gonna make something similar, but I would recommend to council specifically that we treat that like the list. Don't bring it up for debate whether or not you want to refund that, but just put it on the list for debate at a later time, because it's gonna be hard enough to get through the list as it is without debating current list versus future list.
And so can you finish? And also.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wilder.
Yes, there's just one concern I wanted to get out there as soon as possible, because with this group, you've gotta get in when you can. So I'm trying to make sure that was a big concern of mine as far as the staff, because I've looked so forward to that 3% and other addition for the staff, because they work so hard, and we appreciate all the efforts. Now, the school system, what is that total impact to the school budget I got? It was, it was the one point, it was so many different numbers. What was the total amount that we reduced in the school system?
2.2.
So that's 2.2 million? Okay. Have we haven't had discussions totally about with the school system in reference to that? I got some kind of sidetrack from there.
We had originally worked with the schools on the 1.5 million, but this 700,000, like Bonnie had said, was just kind of to spread the impact.
Okay.
We need some help. So as we move towards the list, which is your next task, right now, schools' funding is not on that list. After the school superintendent's presentation, council did not ask for funding to be, any schools' funding to be on the list.
Well, I guess, does that change that since you would, since you would increase that additional amount?
So what I'm suggesting is that you need to add it to the list now to debate what you want to do with. you want to do with that.
Well, let's go and just add that to the list, so we can maybe just have a good discussion of that. I would like to know what kind of an impact that could have on, since they're just getting this information, we're just getting it, well, got our package the other day, just to know what kind of an impact they're saying it would have on them. I just want to know, so we're reviewing this, what kind of consequences are we looking at? Is it reduction in, is it increase in class? Well, we don't know what schools are going to look like in the fall, but if it's normal school, is it increase in class size or, and then also, but kids have been out for school for so long, I'm just concerned, you know, what learning is going to look like for our kids, who, some parents are more aggressive in having school for their kids than homeschooling. And unfortunately, some parents are not, because we live in a diversified society where some parents may not have the time or may not have the educational knowledge to do homeschooling. So I'm concerned what's going to happen when our kids come back, what kind of challenges that they could bring back with them, you know, issues from being home for that time period and having to, sometimes the school is the only outlet some of our children get. So I'm trying to see what resource they might need when it comes back, or what kind of impact is going to be felt upon them when they do come back if we're reducing 2.2 million dollars. So I'd like to see something on that.
So we will add to the, to these two pages that you have. There are 31 items on the list as we went through the entire budget book, so item 32 will be schools for 2.2 million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it's the 1.5 from the initial proposed budget plus the 7.
That was the one on the list. Now, the 700 is what is being requested to be on the list.
Now, I believe it's the full 2.2.
What number do you want?
Let's, let's do the whole number, the 2.2. If we can go from there and discuss that. I'm really concerned about the most recent number, but again, we had the whole 2.2, we can just have a good discussion for that. And then the last thing, you mentioned, you already mentioned about the trash portion. So the plan was that, I had it on my list, but the plan is to look at that at another time period or to, is it on our next discussion?
Yeah, so that is number 20 and 21 on this list, but there will be a presentation and a discussion with council on those two items particularly next week.
So that's already on the list, okay. I just had a concern about that as well. Okay, thank you, that's it. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Para.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Verchek, a couple of years ago, actually while you're the deputy city manager, you produced a chart for us that showed school funding year over year over year. Would you mind updating that chart for the current year with the proposed numbers, the, I guess, staff's proposed numbers for 2021?
Sure, we probably have it and just didn't give it to you yet, but we'll update it with the 2.2. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Helgason.
On your last slide, you said the January 12th. Some of those items, you know, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can implement those now. Lots of these items that we've had in here, we've taken from reserves or, you know, when you see the numbers that you gave us, some of these numbers that said the payer, the folks that are paying the bills, we've lost, they've lost 15%, of them have lost their jobs. On here, you have no reduction in force because of relating service delivery. Now, if there is a way that we can, I guess, kind of look at lots of businesses have now, just like UVA just announced today, that they're cutting administrative salaries and positions by 20%. It's where we can keep the boots on the ground, the folks that are actually delivering service, whether it be the folks putting out the fires or the police or the folks teaching our kids in schools and picking up trash, and leaner, but not so many administrative positions or cuts in those administration, either salaries or administrative positions, because, you know, I think what we did is with this budget and this presentation said, hey, we're assuming there's going to be some less money that is coming in because, you know, 6.5 million less in revenue, here's how we can augment that. We've never have done in my whole tenure, like a zero-based budget, that said, what do we actually really need? You know, we have lots of things that would just kind of incrementally go up. I talked with the school superintendent when she came last time. I'm sure lots of those assistant principals are totally needed, but when you look at 1.5 million dollars that isn't funded by the state, is there something we could do, especially now, where we could then do, as Sterling had mentioned, where we can keep the folks that we need, the boots on the ground, pay them more, but get rid of some of that administration, you know? And I realize every organization, especially as large as we become, you know, there's administration in there, you know? We don't like to call it fat, or, you know, I'm sure it's totally needed, but there's probably things that we could do. I mean, you know, especially in light of today, listening to UVA Medical Center, furloughing doctors, cutting administrative salaries 20%. I mean, this is UVA Medical Center, which is the, you know, second probably the Cleveland Clinic in Mayo, you know? I mean, it's a top-notch facility. So I don't know if there's anything, I know you have those listed for the January 12th. I think that's actually something that would probably even be better to do if they could do it now without impacting the service delivery to our citizens, but getting rid of some of that middle stuff in there. Is that anything that you've looked at or?
I know I can just speak for the finance budget, and since I've been a director...
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, I guess that would be more Ms. Verchek probably.
I have 13 less positions, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I would say that for years, city departments have been working at the margins from top to bottom, and if there were fat in this budget, you would have cut it by now. So I don't believe that we have a fat budget, to say the least. Everybody is busy doing the work that you have expected us to do. If we get to the point of having to do staff furloughs on a, you know, multi, multiple days throughout the year, that's where we will go. We are hoping there will not have to be a reduction in force, quite frankly. And, you know, if council has certain positions that you want us to look like, look at, there are a couple on this list, by all means, we will do that. But we go through this budget, we did zero-base this budget during the days of campaign, and frankly, every time in the four years that I've been city manager, we asked departments to submit a budget typically with less funding than they had the prior year. Now, there have been increases in staff salaries for certain to stay at least close to the market. It breaks my heart that we cannot go move forward with a 3% salary increase and implement Phase 2 of the Corn Fairy Study. We thought hard to do that study and to have you convinced that we needed to make movement, and you, to your credit, and thank you, you adopted the study, you appropriated money for Phase 1, which was about 2.1 million dollars. We have about 3 more million dollars to go, and without doing Phase 2, that number is going to do nothing but grow, because the market is going to continue to grow. So frankly, I take offense that you think there is wasted taxpayer dollars in this budget. We do not believe there is. And if you want to direct us to cut a particular service, all you have to do is say, cut this service. That is, that is council's prerogative.
And it wasn't about the cutting of the service, because that's what I specifically looked at, the terms up there. The fact that we have lots of department heads, you know, some of them don't live in the city, is there anything that can be...
There are more and more departments living in the city as I have hired them, and I have shared that with you.
And they used to all require to be living in the city, but a lot of those things have grown over the years. And so I know a few years ago, you consolidated one, you consolidated economic development with tourism, even though we brought tourism in-house.
And museums.
And museums. If there's other things like that that could be done, that's what I'm suggesting, that we really kind of hone through that, especially in light of what, like I just said, what UVA just did today. So it's not...
We are not a hospital.
Totally understand.
So I don't think that is a very fair comparison, quite frankly, Councilmember Helgason.
It's exactly a comparison. I mean, you're looking at it, you're looking at a, something that was done today that they didn't want to do, they didn't have to do until times of stress. Then they kind of do stuff. So we can make sure we implement service delivery, make sure that we have lean leadership and healthy service delivery.
Well, I would like to take an example from businesses that are cutting their managerial CEO, CFO staffs in order to accommodate frontline. I'd love to hear some examples from the business world.
Absolutely.
Of those that are doing that, who generate the revenues and have salary lines that they could afford for the CEO to take a 90% cut and still be able to pay their people equitably or give some of that to their folks. We are not in that position. And so when you're equating apples to oranges, as they say, I know I've heard that for many budget seasons now as I sit here, you're equating apples to oranges, then that's what it is, apples to oranges. So at this point in this budget, it would be constructive if people say, cut services, because you need supervisors, you need administrators to run departments. Departments are not run by always frontline folks. So the idea is grand as a PR point to say, oh, let's cut fat, oh, let's cut levels of management. You need supervising administrative folks to run departments. So that, to me, is not even a topic of conversation. It sounds good to some ears, but it's not reality. So right now, we're dealing with life, death, reality, and how we're going to look on the other side of a pandemic, not pandering to people who just want to hear something that tickles their ears. These very frontline people who have been out here through this pandemic, we're now saying can't get a raise. So we praise and appreciate them when they're on the front line, but then we tell them, you're not worth the study and the money we put aside. So anybody that that tickles their ears to hear anyone say that, you're not living in reality to what our service base is and should be in the city. So while we have all this time to sit here, it's 5:21, pandering to tickle people's ears...
Madam Mayor, please, I take offense with that when you keep saying that I'm pandering. I'm not pandering, I brought these things up to the city manager.
You are bringing up something that is apples to oranges.
Absolutely not.
At a time when we have to deal with a real budget and services.
I brought up something factual, and all you do is attack, just like you do with Liberty University, just like you did, you're bringing up, speaking of pandering, what about this? Calling our people reckless, and you didn't even go over there. You spout off at the hip and acting like I'm bringing up something that is just tickling ears. I'm actually bringing up things that I think would be important, because our restaurants have done that, our businesses have done that.
Hand me the paper that you brought.
No, I see that, right here.
Hand me the paper that you brought. Hold it up.
No.
While I say that I called something reckless to someone who lied, to city manager and myself.
I went over there, three days right after.
What I will tell you is that you've been working up on this, and we can have it right now till 6 o'clock.
I brought up a good little thing, and then all you do is attack my perspective. That's kind of what we do with the list, right? We act, actually add things. I added that. I've said, is that something that we could do? And then you act like it's, oh, it's just so reckless, even bring it up.
Bring up a service we can cut.
If you don't like it, that's fine. Vote against it, no problem.
We vote against a lot of what you bring up, but my point is this.
Absolutely, I know, that's why we're in the problem that we're in, because you don't save money, you blow the reserves. Absolutely. I'm getting, just, just, why don't you be the mayor, be a leader, and quit attacking a council member by calling him pandering or tickling ears or whatever? I brought up a factual thing.
Would you quit being a weak council member that I have to attack?
Madam Mayor. Yes, gosh.
I, listen, I don't need to move on to anything. If I think that people are pandering, attacking the city staff, attacking the budget they have brought, attacking the decisions they made, I have the right to defend it. I don't care who you are, I don't care what side you sit on, I don't care what you think you are, I can say what I need to say. And if you're going to take the time to attack the repeat arguments, apples-to-oranges conversation about a medical facility 65 miles away that's cutting a budget and equating that to this running of this city government, I can say what I need to say.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do think that the points that have been articulated have been well-articulated, and the audience, and certainly me as a council member, understand both, but I do think in terms of the budget and the task before us, we need to move on with regard to the details of the list.
We do, and that means a lot of the questioning needs to be cut, and we need to stick to what the presentations are.
Councilmember Para.
Oh, yes, ma'am. All right, well, let's go on with the list. How about, can we talk about the list now? I've got a motion I'd like to make regarding the list. Is that, there, good? All right. So in reviewing the list, there are a lot of zero items, zero-dollar items, which are adds to the budget. It's, I don't believe that's appropriate to do at this time, so I'm going to suggest in a motion that we're going to strike items 9 through 19 and 31. And if I get a second with that, I'll be happy to take as a friendly amendment any items that they want to pull out of that for further discussion, but I don't think we need to add any, any dollars to the budget right now. So I would move that 9 through 19 and 31 be stricken from the list.
Second, and let me find out what you're looking at. Okay. Because I had it right before me, and I hit a, I hit a button and it, that went, okay.
I'll be happy to take a friendly amendment if somebody wants to pull a number off of that.
I seconded it, so if you want to present what you're going to say, and then...
I'd like to make a friendly amendment then, and with remove for further discussion, items 11, 12, and 31.
Items 11, 12, I'd be happy to accept that, and we can strike the rest of them.
Thank you, sir.
And adopt it, okay. So can you present what you're saying?
All right, okay, so just, so what this is, is what I'm doing is, as we have the list, there are several items the city council, and going through the process, decided that these would be areas where dollars could be added to the budget in order to pay for services that were not recommended by city staff at this time. These are services that our departments wanted, services that certain members of council thought that we, I had several of them, could support, but obviously, the funding is not there. And most of the services I support primarily were fire and police, and it really hurts me to not support these anymore, but I think that's what we need to do. I would like to see these items returned to the future list, but as far as budgeting the balance right now, I think they need to come off. These items are, items...
Number 9 through 31 is what you said?
Well, 9 through 19, but we pulled out 11, 12, so items 13 is Commonwealth Attorney's Office and in-house investigator, Commonwealth Attorney's Office, legal support receptionist, police, additional five sworn officers and three vehicles, police recruitment advertisement, police, gray key software, police, quantum tape, library backup, fire, the additional EMT unit, which really bothers me, but I think it's prudent to do right now. So those are the items.
And did you go with, so what did you say through 31?
Mr. Wright asked that 31 be pulled for future discussion.
So number 30 was actually the opposite. Number 30 was less spending.
That's correct.
So we should probably keep that on the list.
All I'm saying is, well, it's now 13 through 19 and 31, just strike those in the list and then go through the, excuse me, not 31, 9 through, 13 through 19, strike them off the list, and then we'd discuss the other ones as we go through.
Items 20 through 30 would remain on the list for discussion.
Gotcha, okay, I thought you said 9 through 31.
And 31.
And 31, correct. And 9, and an 11 and 12.
I'm just trying to shorten the process.
Can we add a few on that?
I thought this would be the easy one.
Okay.
Just to, just to get it done, and then, and then if there are other ones, that could be brought up, brought up as needed.
Okay.
I was hoping we, this would be something that we could get a vote where everybody would agree on this one and just move it off.
Because some of these other ones seem like they would probably be fairly easy. Isn't number 21 adding a position?
That's a deduction.
Okay, sorry, okay.
It took me a while to...
You, you looked at it right, so I'm sorry, I...
Is that a deduction, or is that, that's...
Yes, sir.
Oh, the zeros, gotcha.
Anything with a zero on it, basically.
Gotcha, okay.
Take number 31, start with zeros, yes.
Everything with a zero, except for 11, 12, and 31. 11 and 12 and 31, the council member I'd asked that we pull aside.
Okay.
So I would suggest that we start with items...
Madam, excuse me.
I'm sorry, you need to vote.
We need to vote on this one.
Sorry. Sorry.
When the mayor's ready, or are there any other comments?
Any other comments? Councilmember Wright?
Madam, I'd just like to add on to what the, what Councilmember Perro said, which is that it is, it is, I think, incredibly hard for, for this body as representatives of the community to vote against, or to, to vote not to even consider really, unfortunately, this budget cycle, some of these items that are, that are zeroed out here. I mean, I think, obviously, we agree, I think, I shouldn't speak for you all, but I certainly agree that we would like to support the nine full-time firefighters as proposed, and, and more, more staffing for the police department, another in-house investigator for the Commonwealth Attorney. We would like to support these items. And in any other budget year, I think these would be serious, incredibly serious items for conversation. It's just unfortunately, the recurring revenue just isn't there this year. So I just wanted to share that reluctance and sadness, because I think, I think we're all feeling that.
Yes, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we certainly could save some time if we did this, but I think item 19 is something that I did want to have some discussion about, because that is a complex issue that deals with service to one of our most rapidly growing parts of the city. It also has components involving the trade-off between how much more we pay in overtime, and there will be a net savings, not a total savings, but there will be a net savings to the fire department if those, that overtime is replaced with routine salary employees.
Do you want to just pull that?
I, I would like to pull 19 off of it, because, and it also benefits safety.
Okay, that was the one that hurt the most, I think.
So just number 19?
19, pull 19 as, as well.
And I will say, three months ago, all of these would be legitimate and viable topics of discussion, but the economic landscape has trained, has changed so drastically between then and now that I think that's a reasonable approach.
And I would have a question. So the Chief Talent Development Officer, the Youth Futures Coordinator, that would still be on the list?
That's, everything else is still on the list.
I would ask that those be pulled in too, as well. If we're talking about record unemployment, we need people to help with employment.
Would, so have you, have you voted?
No, we haven't, but that, I'm asking for...
These are zero ones?
What number is that?
They are seven and eight.
I did not include those.
Those, Madam Mayor, are still included.
Okay, they're still on, right? For discussion, okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, Councilmember Hegelsohn.
Thank you, and as, I'm glad Councilmember Nelson asked to pull that one, because I do think that is, and again, that's, that's why I said earlier that it isn't necessarily fat in the budget, but when we're having trade-offs such as this, we've really got to fixate and focus. And it's not pandering, it's making sure that our citizens are safe, and if there's a way that we are able to get nine full-time medical and firefighters out on the streets, because I've seen the call volume, I've seen when medic units are out, if, if there's a place that we could pull that from, if it's something that is administrative, call it apples and oranges or whatever, but if there's a way that we could do that in order to where we could add those desperately needed boots on the ground, that is what I would like to see us do. So I'm glad Councilmember Nelson wanted to pull that for future discussion.
Are there any articles to pull out about that? Oh, thank you, sorry. It was referencing back to pandering. Yeah, we need the vote on the Councilmember Perro's...
Motion, which is...
Motion, which is to pull those items.
Which is items nine, 10, 13 through 18.
Thank you. And 31?
No, Mr. Wright asked that be pulled.
And the motion has been made. Are there any further discussion?
They were, but Mr. Wright asked that they be pulled.
Be pulled out. All right, we will do a record vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, voice vote. Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perro?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelsohn?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And aye. All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair, but we would like to have items on the list. I would now suggest that you begin with items, with item one, and actually items one through four, which staff has already included in the reductions associated with the $6.4 million economic impact, revenue impact as a result of the pandemic.
All right, so as I was reading this, Madam Mayor... As I was reading this, those numbers were stricken from the list because they're already included in the staff adjustments.
Correct.
So if council would like to restore any of those, then it, let's, can we put it in as a, I guess it'd be an undeleted number, and then, and then it would have a, excuse me, an undeleted line, and then it would have the, the amount in the proposed budget, and that'd be an add back into the budget at that point.
And that could...
Yeah, I think, I think that's the way to do it.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Yeah, I'll be happy to make the, make the motion to, to keep those as, I don't think we have to, because it's already in staff adjustments.
Right.
It's already, it's already crossed off.
Okay, to, to adopt, to adopt staff adjustments, probably, wouldn't it be?
Would that be helpful?
Yes.
Okay, that's your motion.
Yep, I'll make a motion to adopt staff adjustments.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made, and second, do you have further discussion? Any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
All right, and Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just sort of curious, for the $75,000 for economic development, what were those items, sort of included in that $75,000? How were we planning to use that money? And I, I'd pulled it up in at, at least the, the budget doc, and it said downtown 2040 master plan and goal four of the blueprint for opportunity. I just didn't know what that actually meant.
So, if I'm thinking about it currently, I think it's a number of placemaking type initiatives throughout downtown, beautification and things like that.
Okay.
Is that, was that in there? Okay.
I think this is something that would be certainly considered to be put back in, you know, if, if the revenue does show...
Yeah, I would like to, do I need to affirmatively state like that?
Well, that would be in the October, right. It's October 13th, and the January 21st, and all those.
Great, yeah. I just want to make sure that we're keeping up, keeping pace. Thanks.
Right, so, so based on the conversation with Councilmember Wilder earlier, it's my understanding that he would like to keep number one on a future list to consider some kind of staff adjustments?
Yes.
Number two, future list, or no?
No, for me.
No, okay.
No.
The health benefits, education advisor, no. Economic development, tourism, $75,000, yes. So that brings us to item number five.
Well, we have a motion and, on staff adjustments.
Any further thoughts? Any further thoughts, raise your hand. Okay, thank you. I'll call for a voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perro?
Aye.
Councilmember Hegelsohn?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And aye. All right, next is number five, that the city manager was referencing. Parks and Recreation.
May I for something else, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
There seems to be a lot of discussion, discussion specifically about item number 19, and that's a big-ticket item. And if council chooses to add something like 19, then they're going to have to make some serious thoughts about offsetting deductions. So it may be wise to go through and, and kind of look at the bigger picture items to find out if, if we're willing to, to make those, those deductions to offset a cost like that.
Why start with number 19 then?
Mm-hmm, I think that's the big one. What did you have, did you have a thought?
While I was out, I didn't realize you put 19 back on the list.
Ah, got it.
Unless we want to take, take a crack at some of the little ones.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out the easiest way. Well, council just needs to recognize, when you're going through this, that if you want something larger, like item 19, then you've got to make some cuts somewhere else.
Seems reasonable. Or if you wanted to add 2.2 million on the schools, for example, you'd have to do something different, so.
Yeah, item 32.
Yeah. So that's even a bigger one, so I don't know where you want to, other than if we just go down the list in order, other than if you have...
I would recommend that we just start at number five and go down the list.
Okay.
We have plenty of time. Parks and Recreation, $37,148.
Madam Mayor, I move that, that is a deduction to the budget. I, I move to, as Mr. Hegelsohn recommended, to, to keep that deduction.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made, and second, do you have any further discussion?
So I just want to make sure that council understands that this will negate the, or re, I'm sorry, it will delay the reopening of the College Hill Recreation Center.
That's why I'm reading through this.
What are the changes in that? The, I see some numbers are stricken in that description. What, what is this?
Councilmember, can I, you're asking the question, and, oh, okay, thank you.
We made changes to those that delayed all of that till October 1st.
Ah, okay, so that's already delayed till October.
Yes. In, in our rebalancing, we, we pushed this out till October 1st.
Councilmember Wilder?
Just so I'm clear, so the 37 is based on opening October the 1st?
That's correct.
Okay. And you're proposing to take that out, too?
Unfortunately.
So if we take all that, then they won't open up at all, or is that what we're saying?
That's correct.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this point, we're not certain as to when groups can gather in closed spaces, which hopefully will be well before October 1st, it may be well after October 1st, but since this event is not going to occur until October, October 1st, although planning and staffing needs to be anticipated, I would, I would support this, to remove this from the list and not fund it, but review it sometime in September to see whether or not the stream of revenue would facilitate this being implemented sometime within that window of opportunities. So I would, I'd support the motion, but I have some cause and hesitation, because it may be possible, and that's not a lot of money if it is possible.
Councilmember Wilder, thank you, Councilmember Nelson.
Again, I am concerned about reduce, reducing that position. I know they just, they did some innovation there recently, and there's so much work that goes on in our community centers, like we don't know what's going to happen between now and, and September, October. We don't know, I'm afraid if we eliminate it, it's going to be challenging to get that one back. So I cannot, with a clear conscience, support that. I'd like to keep that in if possible.
Yeah, I have a, Councilmember Wright?
No, I have a few, Madam Mayor.
Okay, no, I just, I have a question about that too, because if we're cutting schools, and then we're cutting a city center, and that was the teen center, that was potentially the Youth Futures Employment Center, potentially were, then we're double-cutting one of the most vulnerable populations in the city. And so I just, I want to bring that up, because if students in that area, and we're concerned about how they will re-enter the education process, and then we're cutting a center in one of the main areas that demographically we're worried about, the students. So if the schools are partnering with the centers, I would like to see, you know, what will that look like at that time? I understand revisiting, and I would agree with that. Yes, Councilmember Nelson?
Yes, I, and that's viable, there's nobody in this room that's been a more ardent advocate of the community centers than I, but we're not even sure the school's going to be starting on time next fall. And we will have, I think, enough of litmus tests sometime late in the summer, certainly in the summer, early fall, to find out what staffing is needed and what school facilities will be required or not required. So that's why I would support it with hesitation.
And these are two new positions too, as well. So it's not a cut, it's new positions.
So that the, the center can be opened at all. Because remember, we moved positions from College Hill to Jefferson Park.
So we're understaffed by two positions, essentially. Okay, thank you, Councilmember...
Those were the positions that were formerly funded through the Boys and Girls Club at Jefferson Park. While Jefferson Park was undergoing renovations, we had positions at College Hill, and we've been doing just some resource reallocations.
And I just want to make sure we knew it was a highly, as far as I remember, transient community, and so when you have some instability there with schools, and then we're cutting, that's, that's what I want to say. Councilmember Perro?
I think Mr. Wright was next.
Okay, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just, I'm sorry, this is, this is just a little bit aside, outside of, of item five, but I want to make sure I understand that $380,000, that's at the top of the document, the use of reserve committed assigned fund balance projection for COVID, I just didn't understand exactly where that $380,000 is coming from, how, what the methodology is to write with that figure. You see what I'm saying? It's a, and so we have a projected deficit of $6.4 million, which is... Okay, yeah, why don't we move on, and perhaps they, once they have an answer, we can, we can address that.
Any other thoughts?
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts regarding...
Madam Mayor, I'll just answer that, you know, I don't like this either. I'm actually, Mr. Nelson is exactly right, he's been a stalwart supporter of, of community, of the, of the neighborhood centers. He recently converted me to be a supporter of them in the past, I guess, four, four years or so, when we tried to get the Boys and Girls Club in, and just seeing how well they've, how well they've worked and, and the additional engagement to the children. Yeah, this is, this is one of those hard ones, but you've got, if you want to add something back in, you've got to be able to make tough, tough decisions about cuts. And as Councilmember Nelson said, we're not even sure if the schools are going to be back in session. So this would be one of the first ones on, on the list, on the return list, if you can, if you have the money to, to get it open, because you're exactly right, people are need, are going to need places to get together and to continue their education, and to catch up on their education that they missed. But if people can't get together, and it's already delayed till October, October 1st, so it's, I think you can make a more informed decision about that, around that time.
Thank you. And question, internet service was something that we, is this an internet hotspot for that neighborhood? I know that we had, the schools had some spots, this is an internet hotspot for that neighborhood?
Jenny Jones says yes.
Okay, yeah, so then for that neighborhood, we've just cut a hotspot, unless, will that service continue? Can it continue?
It's utility, it's a, it's a, why wouldn't it, it doesn't take staff, a person to monitor it all, all the time, it's just an active signal, correct?
Would you like Ms. Jones to come forward, or?
I think there's, I think there is a monthly fee associated with it.
So this would be just shutting down the, the center entirely if it's not staffed? Is that more or less the implication?
That's correct.
Well, this specifically says two new positions.
And it also says internet service, $795.
Okay.
It is an internet hotspot.
It's an internet hotspot.
All of the neighborhood centers are, yes.
That's what I thought.
And they all have fiber optic, except for Jefferson Park.
Okay, Councilmember Nelson?
I think, I appreciate that. I think the question is whether or not deleting this position will delete the hotspot.
Unless we leave $795.
That's probably easy enough.
We can still make the payment and keep it a hotspot.
Yeah.
Someone does, someone doesn't have to occupy the building. We actually are not occupying the building. We actually are not occupying the building right now, but it's still a hotspot.
Still a hotspot, okay, so the internet service would not be cut, right, based on this decision?
Ms., Ms. Jones, mask it, mask it.
Yes, Councilmember Wright?
Could you, so, I just want to be clear here, right now, the items that have a number associated with them, that haven't been struck out, are still budgeted for in the 194,446,931. If we cut it, then that means we would get to move that $37,000 somewhere else, right? So could you make do with one person?
We have to have two people at all times at the neighborhood centers, this is just following the...
Safety issue, okay, so it is required, all right. Then in that case, because these neighborhood centers are just so important to the fabric of the neighborhoods in which they, they are, I would also not be in favor of, of removing funding for College Hill.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jones, I think we're done. Thank you. Councilmember Wright, were you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any further?
Oh, but Ms., Ms. Witt did have a...
I can answer that question.
All right, thank you.
Sorry. I knew it had to do with the two reserves, but I didn't want to tell you wrong. So the 700,000 that we reduced the school's task force from, offset by the 319,000 from GLTC we put back, so that's the net of those two numbers in that use of reserves.
Is that three each?
Yes.
I see.
I apologize.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so the motion is on the floor, and anyone have any questions, thoughts? Vice Mayor Dolan?
I'm really struggling with this one also. Would this mean, though, that we could then target it for January, in the January? I mean, I'm looking at number 19, and so I'm kind of scraping to figure out where the money's going to come for 19, so I mean, but I would like to know whether or not we could postpone the opening until another day.
Certainly, we can put it on a future list, whether that comes back to in September, in January, or September, October, November, December, January, as resources become available, we can bring things back to you.
Thank you. Review it in the future.
And Madam Mayor, and I think lots of these things, I think Councilmember Perro, now I understood what he said a long time ago, said that we're taking it, if we're taking something from this list, it doesn't preclude it coming back on the list when Donna does the presentation in October, and the new numbers and the new presentation in January, this is getting through this budget with drastic changes, so.
Any further discussion? All right, thank you, I will take the vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Nay, I just don't feel comfortable in, in taking money away from the College Hill Center, especially for the area that I represent. So I don't feel comfortable in doing, I recognize the importance of the community centers, the fact that they are, especially I know what's going to happen with the school versus that may really be needed at that point, so I don't feel comfortable in doing that, so no.
Councilmember Wright?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Perro?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagelson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
No.
And no here. Number six, non-departamental?
So, just to clarify, that gets stricken from, that failed, so it gets stricken from the list.
Correct.
All right, thanks.
Number six, non-departmental, $50,000, Safety and Security Task Force.
So moved?
Second.
Motion has been made in second, do you have further thoughts?
Just the city staff had, had reduced, recommended reducing this by quite a bit, and just reduce it by the, the rest until we have time that we can actually look at it prudently.
Sorry to make sure I understand, Councilmember Hagelson, I want to make sure I'm seconding the right thing, you're suggesting that we, that we strike the additional 50,000 as well?
Yes. Yeah, they, they recommended the, I mean, so it was 125 that I recommended, staff already pulled out 75, there's another 25,000 in there.
There's another 50,000 in there.
Yeah, yeah, another 50,000 left in there to strike.
Right, and you want to cut 50,000 as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Before I, actually, I'm going to retract that a second.
Well, you, you've seconded it, you can vote against it.
And you can talk against it, too.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just can't.
You're just bringing it for conversation right now. All right, yes, Councilmember Wilder?
I'm just making sure I'm clear, so there's still 25,000 for that project, is that correct?
There's still 50,000.
50,000.
Right now.
Well, 50,000 is what I...
And the motion is just to strike it all entirely.
To take that out.
And then we can use that 50,000.
So we can use that 50,000 elsewhere, absolutely.
Actually, in that case, yeah, I'm good.
And this is...
So doubled negative in a, it is a little different, isn't it? This is, it's...
All right, did you, either of you have any further questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any further questions regarding the removal of this 50,000? And this was the Safety and Security Task Force that was put forth after, particularly, I believe, the Virginia Beach incident and some others, for all of our city buildings.
That is correct.
Okay, what will this do to that?
It means that we cannot implement any of the safety measures that have come out of that task force, and the, um, first priority was to add some additional safety measures to this building particularly, and that's where that $50,000 will be used.
All right. Any further thoughts?
We have pretty good safety measures now, nobody can get in the building without us coming through the front door. I mean, it was hard, if some of you parked in a wrong spot recently, you can't get in the building, even councilmembers, so unless you go around and get to that specific front door, so.
Madam Mayor, this is one that I don't care for either. Um, yeah, the world has changed pretty rapidly as far as safety and, and security goes, but for a long time, this has pretty much been a wide-open spot. I think if we weighed another, you know, another year on this and put it, put it off, I don't think it's going to be, it's not preferred, but I don't think it's going to be the end of the world. But I certainly think this is something that should be implemented in future years.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? All right, we will take a voice vote. Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilder?
Um, aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Perro?
Aye.
Councilmember Hagelson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Aye.
And aye. And number six is stricken. Next is number seven, council manager offices, 93,789.
Madam Mayor, actually, number six is, is preserved.
I mean, number seven.
Yeah, yeah, but number six is preserved, we're not striking it, that's, that's actually preserved in the budget.
In the budget, yeah.
So it's a negative 50, well, it's a $50,000 that's going to go to our bottom line that could be used elsewhere.
Right.
So it's not taken off the list, it's on the list.
Right, it's not taken off, but it's, right, exactly.
So we don't have money, we don't have the $50,000 for safety and security, we have that as?
To use it for hiring, to credit.
Part of the new balance.
Yep, to buy new balance shoes, no.
Number seven, council manager offices, 93,789 for Chief Talent Development Officer, full-time position, which was transferred to the council manager offices from Human Resources. And thoughts on that?
So moved?
I am, okay, is there a second?
Yes.
A motion has been made in second, do you have any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
I have a question. All right, so this is being transferred to the Human Resources Office, so there was an offsetting deduction in the Human Resources?
There was, exactly.
Right.
We just realoc, we just transferred this position to the city manager's office, frankly, so the deputy city manager and I could work more directly with the Chief Talent Development Officer, which is basically our training person, and I really would ask council to keep this position. It is currently filled, and in a time when we are cutting trainings and conferences for employees, it is even more important to have this position in-house to help us with staff development.
It's not a new position.
It is not a new position.
Uh, Councilmember Wright?
Madam Mayor, I would move that we strike it from the list.
No, I think it's already been...
Oh, has it been made?
Second. So, and, and so the motion, Mr. Hagelson, is actually to accept that as a deduction?
Yes, to accept it as a deduction. City manager said it's not a, a new position now, um, you know, is that, with the title of it, you kind of wonder, is this something that we do need, you know?
This is our Training Coordinator.
Right.
Chief Talent Development Officer is really just a more current title for this position.
Councilmember Wright? I'm sorry, Councilmember Wilder?
I'm just trying to get clarity, so the motion is to take it out or leave it in? I got confused there.
Take it out.
To take it out, oh, okay, so I thought...
So freeing up 93,000 for elsewhere.
But this, the position is already currently filled.
Well, that's what we're hearing now.
That's correct, this position is, you would be eliminating a position that I believe is sorely needed for the development of our staff.
Thank you, any further discussion, any thoughts? This was one of the positions, this and the next one, that I said during a time of unprecedented unemployment and what we don't know, that we don't know about, future positions, that we need our employment-related positions in place for our community and for ourselves. Councilmember Perro?
When you're finished, Madam Mayor, do me a...
Oh, I'm, I'm done, Councilmember Perro.
Well, actually, that's what entices me to second it, because in a time where we've got record-high unemployment, I didn't think we needed somebody recruiting, but it's already a filled position, it's already a filled position, it was an even swap with another department, and I'm, I'm going to support the city manager on this one.
And one clarification, I thought you said, this is a training position as well, it's not just a recruiting...
That's what she said.
Right, yeah, okay. All right, any further discussion?
Just, I, I made the motion, and it's been clarified a little bit more that it is a current position, but in the spirit of making that motion, I won't speak against it, and I won't vote against my motion.
Do you care to withdraw it?
No, it's already there, so just...
All right, no further thought, I will call for the, does everyone understand the motion and the vote? Okay, so, a yea strikes it from the list, a no keeps it in the current?
No, ma'am, a yes vote will authorize the, will add that to the balance and delete that position, a no vote will not do anything.
Will not do anything to it.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Which, I guess...
So there'll be one, there'll be one yes vote and six no votes, if you want to do that quickly.
All right, Councilmember Nelson?
No.
Councilmember Wilder?
So no leaves it in, correct?
Correct. Councilmember Wright?
No.
Councilmember Perro?
No.
Councilmember Hagelson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
No.
And a no.
So, I guess the way to think about this, council, is that is not accepted, or, or this is a proposal, and you're either going to accept that proposal or not.
Right.
And it, and it frees up money to the bottom line.
If you accept the proposal, it frees up money.
Right. Number eight is council manager offices, 68,074 for the Youth Futures Coordinator, which is a current full-time position, transferred again to city, to the council manager office from Human Services, Juvenile Services.
This is a position that was formerly known as the Prevention Coordinator, that was located down in Human Services, and council had many a conversation about using this position more to coordinate things like the Mayor's Youth Council, the Youth Services Advisory Board, and to work with youth to help prepare them for the workforce, which is also really part of the Poverty Initiative.
Is that a filled position?
This is a filled position.
Is this a position that was filled just fairly recently? I mean, I think it was unfilled.
It's been filled for about a year.
Yeah, so it's been recent, I think, so I'll make a motion to, uh, remove it, to strike the position, save the 68,000.
Okay.
Is there a second to that motion? And hearing no second, the motion fails without a second. Councilmember Wilder?
I'm making a motion to leave that in.
Well, it already does stay in.
Yeah, it stays in.
Stays in.
Madam Mayor, I'd suggest that we skip item 11 and 12, because they're such small dollar amounts that may just come out in the wash, and just pass them over for right now.
I mean, we can pass them for right now, I would like to return them.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm just saying skip it.
We'll return to them. All right, next is number 13.
We have, skip that amount.
Number 19. Oh, 19, there we go, I'm sorry. The fire, zero, okay, dollar amount, nine full-time firefighter salary and benefits,
Mayor, may I suggest, I suspect this may take a lot of conversation, and you're scheduled to start your regular meeting at 6 o'clock, and you have some guests that are here, so I would suggest that we pick up at this space when we come back to this list, after we talk about trash at our next meeting on May 5th at 4 o'clock.
Sounds good.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, I think that's a good idea, although I would ask, which is, a request, which was a follow-up with the conversation I had with Ms. Witt, was to determine the net savings between what we are now paying for overtime to cover the load on the fire department, to what would be saved, or what that net delta is if we hired the nine additional firemen, which would eliminate some overtime.
And the overtime question was asked by the mayor a couple of weeks ago, we answered the, the question regarding how much has been spent on overtime, we will figure out what the, the delta is, and bring that back to you when we come back.
I, I saw the answer to the, the mayor's question, I didn't know what the differential was between the two. Thank you.
Mayor, I would suggest that we take a five-minute break, so we can just get re...
Okay.
...situated?
Madam Mayor, one call, recess?